Coming up on UGTV. A special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas.
I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I'd ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call roll, please.
A special session is being held on Thursday, October 31st, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the fifth floor conference room for a presentation on Urban 3. Roll call. Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McKeonan. Mugia. Johnson.
Here.
Kane. Markley. Walters.
Here.
Fieldbrook.
Here.
Vinum. Alvey.
Here. So, as many of you know, we have a special guest tonight, Joe Minicozy of Urban 3, and I'm going to pass this on to Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. For some time, I guess, from a staff perspective, we've been looking at different things under the direction of the commission of what we can do for improvements in the community, different ways where we look at things to improve the value by removing blight, and that's been a commission directive of how we go about that, where we're working, taking care of our own property, then looking at others, looking at the many vacant lots in our community. Our emphasis has come from the police department and how they start to approach different things, and through this process, it starts to lay out how we start to look at the value of a lot of different things in our urban core that we haven't been spending as much time on, and I think we found that Mr. Minicozy's proposal or his presentation kind of really highlights some different things for us that we should be taking into account and factoring into our equations as we look at how are the best ways to improve the value in our community, particularly in a time when we're going through a priority-based budgeting process as well, to say, what do we need to value back in our community in order to reduce our expenditures in certain areas or find other ways to grow revenue? And his information is very enlightening in that regard. So with that, I'll turn this over to you, Joe.
Okay, good. Is that good? Thank you, and I recognize a couple faces from earlier shows. I'm going to go back through the information that I presented this morning, and what we're talking about is essentially city municipal finance, but ultimately, it's about taxation. It's how cities run financially. I used to work in real estate development. I've worked in real estate finance. I've worked in city government, and I had my aha moment in the middle of the recession, when essentially your city freezes in time, when there's no permits that come in the door. At that point, you can see your financial model writ large. Can you afford yourself or can you not afford yourself? Because when you're not getting permits, all of a sudden, everything is exposed. And I saw with city after city that they weren't, people weren't putting two and two together to see that we couldn't essentially afford cities, and we were functionally illiterate about our tax system. And I started, I did a presentation in 2009, and I put this quote up from Mark Twain, "A person who won't read has no advantage over one who can't read." And I asked the audience, and this was a bunch of city planners and people doing city stuff, I said, "Who here has read your local tax policies to see how your property tax assessment works, and who understands the CAFER?" And no one raised their hand. And I said, "Yeah, we all work in cities. We all design cities, and we don't understand how they operate financially. So we're essentially illiterate about how the tax system works." I'm trained in architecture. I like to draw pictures and stuff like that, yet I suffered through the tax code to figure it out, because it's your cash flow of how you manage a city. So cities have a system. There's a system of finance, but there's also a system of design, and the best way that I can put forward how I look at cities is that cities all have a DNA, so KCK has a DNA. It has a trajectory, much in the way that I have a trajectory. So this is how I started my life when I was three months old, and this is my path. I'll be papa whether I like it or not, or more importantly, I'm going to be this guy, again, when I had hair. I'm genetically Italian. There's not a lot I can do to change that. You'll see that by how much I wave my hands around, but my family also suffers from a genetic predisposition to heart disease. So I know that that's in me, right? So I have to make choices about the food that I eat, the exercise that I do, all that stuff. Your city's no different, and if we don't have a path of our material, if we don't understand what our genetic material is, we don't know what our costs are. We don't know what's going on. So in Asheville, our great-grandfather is essentially Atlanta. We look at Atlanta, we're nowhere near being Atlanta, but we can see the heart attack that Atlanta had, and so we make different choices even though we're only 90,000 people. So that's a metaphor that I'm putting up front. I'm going to give you a lot of information, but the question to have in your mind when you think of KCK in the future is, who's your grandfather? Who's your grandmother? What do you want to be when you grow up? And what heart attacks did Casey Mo have across the river that you want to try to avoid, or what good stuff did they do that you can learn from? So you have examples all around you. So Asheville, I'm from Asheville. I don't know if you know where Asheville is. I wanted to make it relevant for y'all, so basically, we are in the barbecue zone. We're on the south side of the bar, or we're on the pig side of the meat line. We're not cow barbecue. Chicago's an outlier, but we're also, we're on the vinegar-tomato line, if you want to know exactly where we are in North Carolina, and we're not the freaky barbecue like the mutton barbecue up in Kentucky or the yellow or white sauce people. So we speak our language, just with pig. But Asheville, this is, these are shots of Asheville from the 1970s, flat on our face, boarded up buildings, and basically Asheville was the second-largest city in North Carolina by 1930, and we became the, we had the highest debt per capita of the entire United States when the Depression hit. We thought we had $5 million in the bank. It turned out we had $18,000 in the bank, a little clerical error there, and when that came down, our city council was indicted and the mayor committed suicide. That's how Asheville entered the Depression. So for 50 years, we just had these buildings that we just walked away from because we were flat broke. Anytime we tried to work on our downtown, we would hear from people in the community, "That's not who we are. We're rural mountain people. We're not urban people like Charleston or New Orleans or Charlotte. That's not who we are." And it was this bias, because we didn't, you know, people were operating with things that they thought they were without real information. I ended up working with this guy's company, Julian Price, started a for-profit real estate development company. We basically used his inheritance to fund fixing buildings and helping entrepreneurs. So 75% of the money went into fixing buildings and 25% went into businesses, like some eclectic restaurants, a nightclub, the first vegetarian restaurant, we funded that. But it was about dealing with the city as a product and growing it up. So this is one of our buildings before and after. These are small apartments for folks and a bookstore. Banks wouldn't fund something like this, because they said no one would live in 400 to 500 square foot apartments. But the thing is, when you look at a city of 90,000 people, we're only doing 24 units, so surely, there's 24 people that want to live in a small apartment. And sure enough, this has been 99% leased up ever since. In developer world, that's called a home run. But what I found in our community conversations is, we were talking about biases. We weren't talking about data. What does it mean for us to do development in the community? What does it mean for everyone in the community for us to do that? So this is the value of downtown Asheville. So if we're a $15 million investor, investing in the core area of downtown, downtown was worth $100 million in taxable value. So it's a big portfolio, right? We didn't get a new building in downtown until 2008, so this is the value of just activating those upper stories. So every building you walk by, when it's got an empty floor, that's an opportunity for value, right? If you can get it active, if you can get some taxes growing. Now, it was the city that also cooperated in this. They did street scape projects. They started investing in downtown and sent signals to us in the development world that, okay, we can cooperate with this. We'll do some value enhancement, too. To show you that it's not all love and roses in Asheville, this is a campaign ad from the 1990s, this guy, Chris Peterson, and here he is complaining about $26 million of investment in the downtown. So the city did some street scape projects. They started doing parking. They got rid of parking requirements. There were no parking requirements in our downtown, but they went on a proactive parking management strategy, because we had all these buildings. They didn't want us tearing the buildings down to make parking. They started doing that. But $26 million is a lot of money, right? I don't have $26 million in my pocket, but let's do some math here. If you put $26 million in $100 million asset, and it grows to 500 million, is investing 26 and yielding $430 million, is that a good return on investment? Yeah. Why do we listen to Chris? You know, people have opinions about stuff, but then there's facts, right? And it doesn't stop Chris. Chris has a website now with fire and brimstone with the city council and the mayor on it, and, you know, he's got a bias. He's got an attitude. That's great. Whatever. This is our mayor. I asked the mayor, "Is this a liquor drink?" She said, "It should be." You know, Chris is going to keep on going with this stuff. That's public discourse. People are entitled to their comments. But what I've found is that we've lost this ability to have a civic discourse. This is a kid's book that I found in a garage sale. The city, the town, and the country. It's a teacher's guide, right? So as a teacher, y'all are teachers, training civics to our citizens and how this city operates. You all get to see the budget and how this all happens, right? You have to educate your friends and family about how this happens. This is from 1959. It's a third-grade textbook. In kindergarten, you learn about your house. First grade, the school. Second grade, the neighborhood. Third grade, you learn about regional planning. Did y'all do that in third grade? We learned about cities as part of our civic courses. We don't have this in our schools anymore. But here's, you know, here's the teacher's guide has this, "While patterns vary from state to state, counties are responsible for education, library, health, welfare, et cetera. In studying the functions performed by your county, you will no doubt find there's a duplicative of services and overlapping jurisdictions and a lack of coordination between the county and the communities within it." You all are a joint city-county government. You go across the river, the county wouldn't even participate with this study with Kansas City. That's a disconnection that still happens today. This is 1959, and it just, we just developed these biases without seeing that we're all in this together. So the citizens of Kansas City, Missouri, are the citizens of Jackson County. Why would you just ignore them? But anyway, here's the lesson plan. It's one of those Dick and Jane books. It's painfully white. It's also misogynistic, but putting all that aside, you see what's going on here. There's some overcrowding. There's a new factory that gets built. There's even more kids that go to school. So as a third-grade teacher, you ask your third graders this question right here. Give four good reasons for building a new school. And your third graders talk about what? Equity. Everybody should have a desk. Maybe get everybody in the classroom together. Maybe get another teacher, have two classes. That's called infrastructure, right? Your children learn about need. On the right, you learn about Mr. Canfield. He didn't want a new school. He says, "Our taxes are too high now. If we build a new school, we'll need more teachers and everything else. We'll have to pay still higher taxes." That is indeed true, right? If you buy stuff, it costs money, and you all see that. You have a budget you have to pass. So in blue, this is what you ask your third graders up here. Why would some people have to pay higher taxes, and why are some people against paying higher taxes? What's phenomenal to me is this is a third-grade textbook, and I know adults that can't have this conversation. You know, they'll pick one side or the other, and they'll stick to that dogma without seeing that it's all tied together. We all have to work together in this community. So my favorite part is this, again, for the teacher. Remember, too, that many children, whether urban and rural, and regardless of region, are tragically limited in their knowledge of the world, and their world's largely the space in which they live and operate. People know where they live, how they drop their kids off to school, where they go to work, how they get their groceries, and if there's a disturbance in that anywhere in the system, they're going to show up here for public comment and make it your problem, right? Yet you all have to see the totality of the whole city and how it all has to operate together. But we respond at a very personal level about what people want. There's data that needs to be looked at first. Everybody's a right to ask and complain, do whatever you need, but there's a higher authority that you all have and a higher obligation to manage a city. So what I find is that what we need to remember is the city is a finite boundary of land, more so in your case. You can't annex the next county over. Like, the land you have is the land that you have, and those are the acres that you deal with. So when you talk to farmers, they're always talking about land as an economic model, and you're dealing with the same thing. Your city is essentially, your county is essentially a corporation. So if you look up the word incorporate, it says to constitute a company, a city, or other organization as a legal corporation. So in my case, in Asheville, there's very little difference between my city and our real estate development company, other than our ownership structure. We're both corporations, right? And the city's a corporation, the county's a corporation, our state's a corporation, our country's a corporation. Joe Biden said this on the Stephen Colbert Show, "The United States is the largest corporation in the world." And I'm such a nerd at midnight, I'm looking it up. There is the law that lists us as a federal corporation. Our system of government is a business. You know, it's not to say that we're a capitalistic business. We are a social corporation. We're all in it together as shareholders, citizens, in this cash flow that you all get to manage, right? So my city at $13 billion is six times the value of Ted Turner if it were in the Fortune 500. So think about that for a second. Does Ted Turner look at Facebook every day and make his decisions off that? Of course not. Ted Turner's making, looking at data. He's taking public comment, but he's looking at the data on how the shows perform, or on CNN, or whatever. There's data and information. So back to the production of buildings. This is one of our buildings that we did. So the city did the street scape project. This is what Chris got all upset about right there. So thank you, city. Thanks, y'all, for the garbage can, the bike rack, two benches, and the street tree. Thanks for your investment in front of our building. Chris called that a subsidy, and in theory, he's right. It's in front of our building, but the entire public can walk on this. But we put in retail, office, and residential, so the taxable value went from $300,000 to $11 million. So what that represents for you all is an increase of 3,500% taxes on an asset that was already sitting there. You get 3,500% more money. You didn't, you know, go out and buy 3,500% more garbage cans. We don't care. Does that make sense? Do you have a 401K plan that goes by 3,500%? Or a CD or a bond? Wouldn't you like that? This is cultivating our community's wealth. How do we build wealth for all of us to share? And people are like, "Well, Joe, that's not fair. We've got this Walmart over here at $20 million of value." Fair enough, that Walmart's paying $200,000 in property taxes, but it took 34 acres of my corporation to make that happen. It's not an apples-to-apples understanding. This isn't apples-to-orange understanding, but if you want to see it apples-to-apples with the per acre yield off this. So this is what our building pays per acre in taxes versus their building. Who would have thought that our building's 100 times more tax productive than a Walmart? Now, in North Carolina, our attitude is like, "All right, we lose the money on the property taxes. We're going to get it back in retail taxes." Okay, well, let's look at that. We actually produce more retail taxes than they do. Double. We've got residential. They've got nothing. We've also got a lot more jobs. Now, let's talk about the other economic effects of this. Of these retail employees that are here, on the blue or the red, who's paying the retail employee more per hour? The local businesses on our ground floor or the Walmart? That would be us. Now, let's ask the next level of economic question. Who's hiring the local website designer, the local attorney, the local accountant, the right or the left? These are all decisions we get to make in our community. We just have to be open to looking at them. You know, sometimes people say to me, they're like, "Well, Joe, you just don't like Walmart." And if that's what you're thinking, you're missing the point. I was presenting at the International Association of Tax Assessing Officers Conference. I don't know if y'all hang out with assessors, but if you can imagine hanging out with 2,000 of them, it was a pretty interesting experience. But this guy got up, he's the head of Walmart's property tax division, and he did this amazing presentation on the value of Walmarts to all of the assessors across the entire country. And he showed spreadsheet after spreadsheet after spreadsheet on how cheap his buildings are. Let that wash over you for a second. How cheap the buildings are. Now, assessors are agnostic. If it's a cheap building, it's a cheap building. You can't make value on something that's not worth anything. So the assessors are like, "Thank you. Thanks for making our jobs easier." I'm having a coronary, because I'm like, "How is he getting away with this?" But the assessors were doing their jobs. So I went up to the microphone, and I asked them, I said, "Mr. Terrell, what's the useful life of one of your buildings?" And he quite honestly shot back, "15 years, maybe 20. We designed the building and depreciated it as fast as possible. We'll build another one and depreciate it down again." That's it. We don't care about the buildings. It's more about getting the goods out to people. The buildings are throwaway. That's their commitment to your corporation, 15 years. And you've all seen this in your community, where Walmart's happened, it's died, another one pops up, and they start that depreciation cycle again. Don't hate the player, hate the game. This is a game that we're all trapped in, but the game has more control at your local level than you know. So be aware of that and make sure, I just want you to be a conscious decision. If that's all right with you to have a 15-year commitment with a Walmart, which is the life cycle of a cat, go for it. I'm a dog person, sorry, but I'm just trying to make light of how limited that relationship is. So you all have to think about something that's going to be around for generations, for hundreds of years. You're operating in a corporation that has an unlimited life cycle, and you want to think about the long game. So I breeze through all of this information, mostly to reframe how we look at mathematics. This isn't complex stuff that I'm doing here. It's really, it's like fifth-grade division, about using land as a component of equal measure, right? We already do this when we talk about cars. We don't talk about cars on a miles-per-tank basis, do we? If we did, we'd all be driving Ford F-150s at 650 miles per tank, and you'd say to me, "Joe, that's stupid. All the tanks are different sizes. That's not a fair way of looking at cars. You say miles per gallon. That's efficiency, right? Miles per gallon, the numbers change, and we should all be driving BMW Asettos at 70 miles per gallon." So if we're doing this for a $3 commodity, shouldn't you be doing it for a $30,000 commodity? You know, this is your land. This is your community. Look at it with value and the value that it has. So we've done this all across the country, taking every single, you know, all of the cities that we've done and mashing them together, we see this trend. For every dollar of county taxes, somebody's paying out to the county who lives out in the county per acre. Their brother or sister in the city's paying about five times that to the same county. This is the Walmart. This is the mall. That's a two-story building. This is a three-story building, and this is a six-story building. This could be in Driggs, Idaho, Durham, North Carolina, or Dallas. As soon as you start stacking those stories, what you're doing, you're just stacking your dollar bills, right? Every floor has its own value, but what's crazy is it's an exponential jump. It's not a proportional jump up when you add the stories. And we're not talking skyscrapers here. So back to Asheville for a second. Here's my county, 350 square miles. I've got non-taxable in gray right there. So these are big parks. This is part of the Blue Ridge Parkway right here. So this is Mount Mitchell. This is Mount Pisgah. Both of those are non-taxable. So just to be crude about it, they don't pay me taxes. I don't care about it, right? Just be rough about it. Green is low value. Purple is high value. So this is the Biltmore Estate right there. There's low value, high value. The Biltmore Estate is worth $100 million, one house. Anybody have a house worth $100 million? When Bill Cecil shows up at one of our commission meetings, we all genuflect and thank him for his time, because he's a very valuable person in our community. But I would argue, how is that fair? I don't have 180,000 square foot house. I don't have 2,000 acres of land. He's got the biggest gas tank. Of course, it's the most valued. So rather than total value, let's do value per acre, and the map changes. I'll show it to you in 3D. Can y'all tell me where our downtown might possibly be? Boom. Yep. And then you can see 10 miles away, this is our little sister of Black Mountain. This is a village of about 8,000 people. You can see it's downtown. Now, there are also other questions here, other data points. I can tell you West Asheville. This is our Brooklyn over here. This is a community of low wealth and middle income. I live in this neighborhood, and that's actually more tax productive than one of our more wealthy neighborhoods. You can see it clear as day on the map. Now, we also use this for community conversation. I've got, I've got friends that live out here in Fairview, and these folks think they pay a lot of taxes, because the only people that they know are people who live further out, out here, who pay less than them, right? They have no idea what we're paying in our downtown. So we can use this information to say, "Look, we're all in this together. We're all paying six mils across this whole county area." So if you lay a six-mil-thick blanket across this thing, where's the county getting all of its money? The county residents, they outnumber us two to one in the city. They got our state representative to call us a cesspool of sin, and I was on their downtown association board, and we're like, "Really? Seriously?" And so, you know, how about a thank you card? You know, it's like, "We're giving you all this money. Like, just all work together here." But if people can't see that, they're going to operate with their biases. So back to you all. First, we had to go through your tax system. Every new state that we go into, we have to learn how you operate. This is the way our tax system works. We have a market value, gets a taxable reduction to a tax value. You multiply your tax rate or your mill rate, you get your taxable. It's a straight-line system. There's more complex ones that are out there. Y'all are pretty close to ours, because you have a taxable reduction to an assessed value, mill rate, and whatever. But you have a couple quirks. One quirk is your appraisal value, you're only appraising 25% of commercial, and you're only appraising 11% of residential. So when you run the numbers, this is the, for the same $600,000 worth of value, that's what your commercial property is valued at. This is what your residential property is valued at. Y'all follow me? So if you're a resident, you get a discount, period. When people talk about TIF, and we complain about TIF or a deal that you all have to discuss here on commission, that's an active engagement into a tax increment, right? That's, we're all conscious to it. We're in the sunshine of being in this room, talking about it. But that's a TIF, too. If you're going to tax a value less, that's a gift. Just own it. That's what it is. So here's your mill rate. So basically, your resident is paying, or your commercial property is paying two times more than your residential property. So as you talk to your citizens, and this is common in a lot of states, that we typically tax our commercial more than our residential, and that's just the way the system is. But the citizens need to be aware of that. The other thing that's kind of weird is that your state gives all the residential property $46 out of your education fund. So basically, anybody that's a resident in Kansas state gets $46. I don't know how they're trying to motivate you all, but we kind of thought it was like Oprah shows up, like, "You get $46, and you get $46, and you get $46." Like, what's up with that? But anyway, they essentially raided your education fund at your state level, which is essentially like throwing away, every resident threw away 12 backpacks or 300 pencils. I mean, there's a cost to your system. These aren't free gifts when your government hands you tax bills like that. That affects other forms of running your system. So be conscious of that. So back to your, this is your county in total tax value. So think of this as miles per tank. And you see the big parcels are worth a lot of money. But again, they're big parcels. So rather than total value, let's go value per acre. The map changes. And this is the productivity. Again, non-taxable in gray, low value to high value. And then here it is in 3D. This is the market valuation. Here's the taxable. Once you do the reduction based off of the 12% and 40%, right? So you see how residential drops down a whole lot more than the commercial stuff.
Joe, if you would just pause here for a second. So we're broadcasting this to our residents. And so just to be clear, if you can see the bar graph on the left, the graph on the left, it shows from the gray all the way down to the purple, it's more value per acre, higher value per acre. And then the heat map shows that the higher elevations are the more productive taxable value per acre. Thank you.
Yeah. It's all per acre. This isn't, this isn't apples-to-apples understanding because then all of these parcels are different sizes, right? So this makes things relative. You know, someone's maybe not paying, you know, a million dollars in taxes, but if you had an acre of that stuff, that's what you'd be collecting, right? You know, when I first did the analysis of our building against the Walmart, somebody goes, well, that's a cute trick, Joe. You know, the Walmart's 34 acres, and it's gonna be a much larger number. I said, well, to be fair, what's 34 acres of my downtown if I had 34 acres of that building? So why wouldn't we do that? It would still be 100 times more than the Walmart. And then we just, our mind plays tricks on the way that we look at numbers without seeing things in a parity level. So we just try to help people with that. Cutting off, just getting into the Kansas City side. So once this area drops off out here, this is the Kansas City limit. Again, total value, value per acre, and there's the map. So Bonner Springs and all of that, it's its own part outside of there. Now, you see some really good value out here outside the University Hospital area, your downtown. And then getting into the downtown area, this is total value, value per acre, and you see along Minnesota is where you're getting your heat here. You also see a lot of non-taxable in through here. So this is your most fertile garden in most communities. So just be aware and be mindful of the non-taxable real estate and keep it in check. And it's not to say don't have non-taxable. Every city's got a city hall and a county building and parks and things like that, churches. But just be mindful of how much of that is, is non-taxable. So speaking of which, here's taxable, non-taxable for your county. This is about average for counties that we see, about 17%, unless you get out into the Rockies where huge swaths of the county are federally protected mountains and stuff. This is about average for particularly on the east coast. And then your Kansas City is about 17% tracking with the county, and when you get into downtown, you're about 40%. This is on the average side, particularly for county seats. In Asheville, we're a county seat, we're 44% non-taxable. But again, you wanna keep that in check. Particularly surface parking lots, you wanna be mindful of that because that's a lot of horizontal use with not, with no value. Here's a side view of your city. If you could look at it like a mountain range, and you can see Hanover Heights downtown, Speedway pops up like Bonner Springs. And then it's a lot of flatness in here. So as a shareholder of the county, Kansas City's about 17% of the area. It's about 11% of the value. That's a 1 to 0.6 ratio of productivity. That's on the low side. Cities are typically like a 1 to 3 ratio in cities of the county. In my county, we're a 1 to 5 ratio. We have a very potent city. Your downtown is a piece of the city, is a 1 to 5 ratio, which is just super productive. So even in the state that your downtown's in, it's a producer. And to, your downtown to the county is even greater at 1 to 9. So it's good for your downtown.
Could you just step back a couple of slides and just walk me through this part again? I'm not tracking.
Sure, sure.
The ratio.
Yeah, the ratio, I mean, the ratio just comes from the pie charts, basically. So when you divide this number into that number, it gives you its potency. So think of it this way. If you had 100 people, you had a shoe store, right? Well, actually, let's use this number. This one's better. If you had a shoe store with 100 people on the staff, and one person's responsible for 5% of the shoe sales, like, how would you treat that person? That person's productive, right? It's not 1%. She's selling five times her capacity, right? So that's the way that I look at that, is like a potency level. Percentage of land area to value, right? How much are you punching above your weight? If you're a 1 to 1, that means you're just, you're carrying your average. What you see here is you're punching under your weight. So this is not strong. That's why I said this should be a 1 to 3 to a 1 to 5 ratio of productivity. That's your potency of land area. It's just a quick metric, basically. Yeah, I understand. And it's kind of a weird thing. People don't typically look at pie charts that way. But that's, we're trying to come up with a numerical crime, but you see how it starts to escalate up once you see the potency of that little downtown across the entire county. And that's kind of typical of what we're allowed to see. What's good for, the slogan that I like to say is, what's good for downtown is great for the city but unbelievable for the county. Because typically, counties don't service the downtowns, like particularly across the river. Those folks in that downtown, when they need the garbage picked up, it's not the county that does it. When they call the police, it's not like the sheriff shows up, it's a police officer. So they pay an extra level of service to the city and the county. And in their case over there, they're also paying a business improvement district on top of that as well. So they're paying three levels of taxes.
So with regard to this ratio, and I think you might cover this later, but I wanna make sure I completely understand it. The overall comparison is 1 to 0.63 or 64.
64, yeah.
Which means there are several areas that are undervalued in terms of that ratio. Does, I don't think I saw that or understood where those areas might be this morning when you gave the presentation. So could you make that kinda clear as to where those areas might be that are kinda pulling that number down?
Yeah.
A ratio down, rather?
It's probably a lot of your vacant land that has incredibly low value. Things like that. It's just, and that starts to depreciate land around it. So it just, areas just start to depress. Is that, that makes sense?
Yeah, you said that this morning. I didn't know how that related.
Yeah, I think that's the relationship.
Exactly what it was, okay.
You're totally right, yeah. So working together, we, again, we did this as a larger study. So here's, here's y'all. And so your purples started about 3 million. And we had to tune you differently because once we get across the river, they're kind of like a nuclear reactor that's exploding. Their purples are starting at 10. So you can see how we tune you down based on that. So you take a huge step down when we bring them in because they're way more potent. A lot of this is kind of, it's hard because the valuation and assessment over there is done by different state rules. It's a different market category. But just the best that we can do is like line them up in an equilateral level. This is the easiest way to do it from a valuation standpoint. Theoretically, a Kansas City, greater Kansas City person has the opportunity to shop in all of these areas. And the purchasing power is gonna be the same on both sides of the river. But what they spend on housing is gonna be less value here based on what's going on in the marketplace. People will pay more to be on the other side. But we don't have Johnson County, which we'd probably see a different distortion down there. So for you all, oh, sorry, back to this real quick. So you can see like they have a mountain of value here, and then it kinda drops down. You get a second mountain right there in the Country Club Plaza area. And then, and we'll get back to, you can see these like, like this really hard, that's TruSt right there. And we'll get into this with the redlining maps, but you can see the value effect of what happened east of TruSt. And that was by design by a public policy that happened to those neighborhoods. And we'll get into that in a second. So for you all, we typically grab the Walmart as like a control subject. Everybody's got a Walmart. So your Walmart's pulling about $150,000 of value per acre as its taxable value. And I'll keep it on the bottom of every slide right here, so you can see it in relative terms. It's, so it's 147,000. These houses are pulling 30 to 40,000 dollars an acre. And that's, your average, actually, both of these are above your average value. Your average value of your housing across your entire city is $24,000 an acre. And both of these are more potent. So just, I don't know if you would've thought that driving by them, but they are. So let's call it $25,000 an acre for the average single family across the city. When you get into multifamily, it bumps up to almost double that at $48,000 of value per acre. And both of these are actually worth more than the Walmart. You can see that, those are the numbers. Architecturally, they lack a certain character, but they're interesting. The valuation is the value. When you get into the downtown, now we're at $90,000 an acre, $36,000 an acre, but downtown housing's averaging 56, or about double the average of your city housing. And when you get into your multifamily in downtown, this is 195 or 200,000 dollars an acre. Downtown multifamily is averaging about 90,000, or about a little bit more than three times average single family. You know, it's just, that's the value. In Kansas City, Missouri, their single families averaging three quarters of a million. Or, sorry, three quarters of 100,000. So 75,000 for a single family, about three times your single family here. Their multifamily is killing it at about 100,000 dollars, but they also have some incredibly large multifamily. They also have a lot of these guys, these little six-packs that do really well. Commercial land uses, here's Cabela's. It's productivity versus Walmart. And again, a lot of that is, it's a super cheap building per square foot, and then they consume a tremendous amount of real estate with this parking. So that just basically liquidates the value over the land. This is Nebraska Furniture Mart doing better at about 175,000. Here's the Sam's Club. The Target's killing it at 200,000 value per acre. JCPenney's 200, Walmart in South Wyandots, 230, or double the Speedway Walmart. And then this is the Great Wolf Lodge at about, let's call it 500,000 or half a million. The Legends is half a million. We were a little freaked out by the art. It's a little weird, but anyway, that's moving on. Here's the Homewood Suites by the Speedway at about 700,000 dollars of value per acre. And then this is almost 700,000 dollars of value per acre. Again, it's apples-to-apples. We drive by this stuff. Our eyes tell us one thing, but there's data there that we should be looking at. So think about this like being a doctor. Your doctor's not gonna just look at you and go, well, you're sitting in a chair, you must be good. No, your doctor's gonna look at data and check your blood pressure and do a couple CAT scans or something like that. You're gonna get data to be making decisions. But yeah, that's $50,000 an acre off for that. This is 800,000 dollars an acre, 1.3 million. Let's call it 1.4 million, actually. So this is your, this is your third most productive building in your entire county right there. That's a number three. This is number two at 2.2 million. 3 million for this. And again, architecturally, I'm not gonna defend this building. This is, should be closer to the street in a more urban pattern rather than doing a suburban portcullar in front of it. But still, with that, it's still your number one producer. This is the most potent building in your entire county. But let's not neglect the old stuff. So there's some patterns that your great-grandparents have left you that are actually very, very potent buildings. And you can see them around in your community. So basically, these are pulling half a million, 600,000, 700,000, and this is the new hotel. So that's pretty productive. 700,000 dollars of value per acre just down the street. Here's another interesting lesson. You have this downtown McDonald's pulling 170,000 dollars, which is good. That's better than the Walmart right there. But would you have known that this building's more productive than that McDonald's? You know, 600,000 dollars of value per acre for Ray's downtown. Everybody should go give Ray a big hug because he's productive. And this is 600,000. This is 700,000. 730,000, 800,000. So this is pushing a million right now. And then there's this one. You don't have to be a big building, right? This is pulling 800,000. This one, who's your number five producer, is empty, and it's almost a million dollars of value per acre. So what could we do to get this active? And then it'll bump up from there. So I'm not gonna go through this whole bar chart, but this, we'll leave this with you. But this is basically everything that you just saw done as a bar chart. So it's the same information, it's just a different presentation. Blue is residential, red is commercial, green is mixed use. Here's the single family. So this is all the residential stuff down here. This is Terrace Gardens. But here's the Super Walmart. So Terrace Gardens is more productive than Super Walmart. Here's your Target. The Booth Apartments are more productive than the Target. Then when you get into the downtown stuff, you start to see up over here. Or here's by the hospital, the 39 Rainbow at 2 million. Just in relative terms, what's going on. So basically, two and a half acres of the empty building would equal the 11-acre Target. Apples-to-apples. And this is about what kind of gardening can you do? Where can you prioritize the impact that you can have? How do you do the surgery in the smallest amount of land possible that you get the biggest return on that investment? Half an acre of this thing would equal the three-acre that. This is out in Bonner Springs. This little mixed-use building is doing really well. And again, it's its density and the fact that there's a lot going on on the little bit of footprint that it has. Four acres of that building would equal the 24-acre Walmart. So basically, that's the footprint of that little building right there. If you just did that. If you did, what is that, 10 of those buildings, it would equal the Walmart that took up that land. So can you find 10 people in your community that would wanna try out that kind of small investment? That's spreading your risk out over your community rather than one big hail mary pass. Speaking of which, here's the Kansas Speedway. We went ahead and measured that apples-to-apples against your downtown, and right now, it's winning on the per acre valuation versus downtown. So it's, that's the truth in the data based on its valuation. But when we remove the vacant land in downtown, downtown actually jumps past the Speedway. So if you can deal with those vacancies and get that land active, it's gonna be very productive for you. Speaking of land, we find weird stuff when we do the math and talk with your assessors about this stuff, ask questions. Some of it's just standards that they have to follow. Same with your finance officers. They all have to follow standards of how they account for things. And sometimes it makes sense, sometimes it doesn't. This is one of my favorites. So taking the buildings off the land and throwing the buildings away and just looking at the dirt per acre. So there's no buildings in this model, just dirt. You'd expect the world to look like this. Everybody in this neighborhood has the same value per acre in this neighborhood. That seems fair, right? Everybody's the same value. You and all your neighbors are all pulling the same value. But you start to see some anomalies over here. And this could be human error. It could be math. It could be policy. But it's an error, whatever it is. There's no reason why this person should be double the value of all their neighbors around them, right? But when I was presenting this in Cheyenne, Wyoming, I was asking the community, I'm like, hey, what's going on here? Why is this blue? And when you cross the street, it doubles in value to orange. See right there, it goes from 15,000 to 35,000 just by crossing the street. Same zoning category, same school district, same fire district. And it was really funny. It was like 8:00 in the morning, the tax assessor raises her hand, and she just yells out in the room. She's like, hey, hey, you don't understand. And I'm like, what am I missing? She goes, well, they have more land. The more land you have, the lower the value. The mayor started laughing so hard, he almost spat coffee out. I was like, really? I get more land, you give me a discount? She goes, yeah, that's our standard. I said, all right, this fellow's got three miles of street around them. This person's only got 200 feet. She goes, yeah, we don't count infrastructure as part of the valuation. I said, so your money that you put into the ground to make the investment happen, because no one's gonna develop out there until you run a pipe and a road. So you put money into the ground, you don't want that money back? And she goes, no, it's not part of our standard. And I said, all right. I got a bigger building that I can put on this property, and you can clearly see there's a mall on here. But again, there's no building there, it's just property. If I have a bigger property, I can put a bigger building. And bigger building means more trips, more trips means more car accidents, it means more fire calls. She goes, yeah, we don't account for that in the system. I said, okay, more commerce, more theft, more police calls. She goes, we don't measure that either. The average Walmart consumes more in police services than it pays in property taxes. Did y'all know that? You talked to your police department. And this is the thing, if we're not matching that stuff up, how do you think I'm gonna behave as a developer? I'm gonna go to those big parcels. They're typically at the edge of town. More infrastructure goes out there to them, and I get a discount. And what economic system does this work this way? Where you have a limited resource, and the more of that resource you get, the cheaper it is. Does that work that way with diamonds? If I get a bigger diamond, is it cheaper? No. So I went to the assessor's conference to ask them. I'm like, where did you get this standard? Did Moses deliver it to you? Like, where did this come from? Now, to their credit, their magazine is called Fair and Equitable. And I asked them, how is this fair and how is it equitable? And in their response, they said, it's not. I'm like, where did this come from? And they said, we don't know. You need to talk to Larry. So I talked to this guy Larry Clark, who's the head of research. And I said, how is this fair? How is this equitable? He's like, it's not. We probably need to change it. These are systems that we're all playing around with that we're not conscious of how it affects us at a local level. How is it gonna steer the market? You know, so we see this in your model as well. You know, the out parcels are worth more than the big parcels behind them. You know, and you could, there's your three-dimensional model of it. And just zooming in, you can see, you know, like the commercial core, commercial properties are gonna be worth more than the residential behind it. But you, you know, the bigger parcels are worth less than the larger parcel, or the smaller parcels are worth more than the bigger parcels. It's in the data. But again, these are all standards that affect this. And this is the Speedway out here. Again, the out parcel's worth more than the bigger parcels behind them. So it's just, it's an effect. There's lots of things that affect your policy. And we really appreciate that y'all let us get involved with the redlining stuff. This is the redlining map. So when we started doing 30-year mortgages, when we shifted our market with federal housing changes during the depression, where people could get longer-term mortgages and can get more people into housing, great idea. But the banking industry also came out with these standards of where they would allow and not allow mortgages. And these were biased maps. So this is the grades that they would give you. Grade A was, you're good, you're golden, you can get a mortgage. B, we might wanna check at you a little bit more. C, you're questionable. D, we don't think we're gonna allow you to get a mortgage, right? And so we dropped your redlining map on your city. We also raised another map. This is called the One Dot Map, which is mapping people based on ethnicity. And you can clear as day, this is TruSt Avenue. There is a pretty hard line through Kansas City where they bifurcated it to an east side and a west side, right? And you can see what's going on from a racial standpoint on where they dropped those maps. And that's a reality of what happened in your community. And in KCK, your line goes east-west where you have your split. So this is the effect of what happens. Once you start doing disinvestment, people can't get a mortgage, they can't get a house. It becomes not transferable from an ownership standpoint unless people have personal bank accounts or something. So that land goes into either rental or slumlord case or whatever. But it starts to decay and you start to get vacancies. So this is the vacancy map that follows it. And sure enough, the vacancies follow the pattern of the red stuff. So that's, this is the legacy effect of disinvestment. And again, here's TruSt Avenue, and you can see the mass of legacy effect on the east side versus the west side. So KCK, y'all have about three square miles. We just went and made a big, like, that's what three square miles looks like. That's how much land area you have in aggregate of vacant land, which is not a good thing. You're still better than KC Mo, which is pulling about 7 million, or 7 square miles of vacant land. So that's, in both cases, y'all, that's an issue to contend with. But every American city had, went through this. So we laid your, this is the KC Mo side. We laid the map on it. You can see how it terraces down. Basically, every color gradient that you step down, it drops in Basically, every color gradient that you step down, it, it drops in value, right? So that's the aggregate value per acre of those districts now. That's the legacy effect of this stuff. On the, on the KCK side, this is what you're dealing with. The north neighborhood, the north side was particularly hard-hit in your community. It's down about half a million an acre in aggregate over the whole, which is a big step down from here. So while we're doing this stuff, your staff was actually doing a great job. So I want to definitely call out Judd and Robert on this. Doing work parallel us and running numbers and doing the same thing about the vacant land and what the existing home would be versus vacant homes and seeing the differences. So these two houses, the values versus what's going on with the vacant land. So this is, this will show you the value difference in the tax rolls. I know this is a lot of math here, but, but basically, if you had, on the vacant lot, you put a new home, this is what you would get out of it. And this is a lot of numbers here, again, showing the gain of an existing infrastructure versus building out a new subdivision. So it's actually more valuable for you to add it where you already have infrastructure versus where you have to build infrastructure to cultivate new housing. So it's a net effect gain with doing the infill.
So Joe, this one, I think, is a really important slide. Because again, when we talk about the three point two square miles of aggregate vacant land or vacated land, correct? These are places that already at one time had structures. They're really vacated, not just vacant now. But the, what we're looking at is an opportunity that if we bring the density, we actually take advantage of the fact that the infrastructure cost, added infrastructure is zero. Whereas to do a new subdivision, anyplace else, on green, greenfield, is an additional thirty-four thousand dollars per lot.
Well, and what you'll see here is they also gave the new division, subdivision a fighting chance by giving it a hundred thousand dollars more value. And it still lost at the end of the day. So even with more value, this is what kills you right here, is adding more infrastructure, adding more pipe. You're already carrying a lot of this. But it nets out. It's again, thinking through the, and you have great staff that know all the numbers and are conversant in this. And it's real simple. When you buy more stuff, it costs more money. It's that simple. So looking in Strawberry Hill, just the sixty-one vacant lots in Strawberry Hill, if you put a new home on it at two hundred thousand dollars, you'd get about seventeen, seventeen hundred dollars in new taxes from it. So with those sixty-one properties, that would be an increase in tax base of a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars or a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. All with zero added infrastructure. So basically, a way of looking at it is, this is what you get in value of vacant land. And this is what you get with new taxes of putting a building on it. So basically, if you add one home, it will equal a hundred and fifteen vacant lots. That's how you can start growing your wealth by filling that stuff in. Now, there, there will be hurdles to doing that. There will be, what does it take from a zoning perspective? How do you facilitate that? And, and this would be fine, just waive it? Okay.
So if, if I'm not being too simplistic here, if you go back, go back one more. Even if we, if the, if we were to make up the gap of basically seventeen hundred and forty, of fifty-nine dollars, multiplied by ten years, that's really seventeen thousand, five hundred ninety. Seventeen thousand, five hundred ninety-dollar investment would get us the same place after ten years as doing nothing at all. Plus, we're cutting those, those lawns. We're cutting that. We're maintaining those. And again, we're not bringing any additional sales tax from residents who might be there. And we're also not, don't have the talent pool. And we don't have others. They're not, they're not helping out with the, the schools. This, this is really very interesting.
Thank them. They did, they did this part.
Yeah.
So this is cool. This is, um, this is an animation that, that, um, that I think Judd, oops, Judd did this one, right? So what's neat down here, I'm going to go ahead and hang on to this. So check this out. In nineteen-ten, your great-grandparents had about a foot of sewer pipe per person, right? Somehow, they survived with a foot of sewer pipe per person. Eighty-two thousand people. As they increased every decade, this is an animation that rolls that up. So just go ahead and pay attention to that bottom number as you add people. But also look at the map on the left. Look how much new, new infrastructure they're adding. And then things get crazy after World War II. And you start gobbling up more road infrastructure, more land, more pipe, all of that. And you go from basically one foot of pipe per person to thirty feet of pipe per person, right? When you, when, when I, as a developer, build those pipes and give them to you as a city, what I'm doing is I'm giving you an obligation for your kids. It's going to be forty years before you have to pay for rehabbing those pipes. So what y'all are going through right now, let's go back in time forty years ago. This is, this is basically what you're dealing with is, is this expansion that was going on in the seventies and eighties. This is what your, your infrastructure rehab is going to. And streets, pipes, all that stuff. So basically, you grew your population by double, but you grew your infrastructure by twenty-seven times. And again, it's, it feels nice to stretch out. It feels nice to be out in the middle of nowhere to not have a neighbor. That's super awesome. But there's a cost to that. I like to joke that I want to be six foot tall and have a full eye of hair. I think you should pay for that. Like, what kind of nonsense is that? There's lots of things we like. I want to eat a lobster every day. I think y'all should pick up my tab. But there's a cost to this stuff, and we have to balance that out. So this is what your great-grandparents had with a hundred thousand people in it. They stayed in that boundary. Y'all added fifty thousand more people, but you've grown your area out to this. So one point five percent population growth is six times growth in land area, which means more pipes, more roads, and all that stuff. So just to show you that you're not alone and also maybe give you maybe an example of somebody that's in worse shape, because I don't want this to be too depressing. We did a project in Lancaster, California, which is up and over the mountain from Los Angeles. And these people know that they're about to collapse. They're, they're seeing the signals of becoming a bankrupt city because they're carrying a load. They're also losing Edwards Air Force Base as a prime, a job center in their community. So they're staring down a lot of difficult situations. But they're taking it in stride. They want to know how to stop the bleeding. So they, they're interrogating the whole thing. There are a hundred and sixty-six thousand people. And on their main street, they have one building that's three stories tall. Can you guess where it is in the model? Boom. They basically grew up at the wrong time. They grew up in a one-hundred percent suburban city. They didn't incorporate until the seventies. So one of the crazy things about them is they have nine hundred and fifty-three miles of roads. You might wonder what that looks like. They basically can go to Portland with their roads. Now, these roads all happened at different time periods. So you can see their, their great-grandparents went on a little road-building spree in the early nineteen hundreds. And then they went to sleep and did nothing until after World War II. And you can't help but notice all the lane miles that they built after World War II, particularly nineteen fifty-three, when they did all of that, right? Well, guess what? When, when your great-grandparents build that, that comes back to haunt, haunt your parents' generation here, right? That's your first rebuild. Now, you all have been through, for those of you that have been on commission long enough, you've seen capital calls where all of a sudden you have to reinvest in an area, rebuild a road or a pipe, right? What, what do you do when you're hit with that amount of lane miles of rehab in your capital project? You need more money. In a lot of places, what people do is they either annex more land, they do more development. In this case, they did more suburban development at their edges, which brought more lane miles, right? Well, this comes back to haunt you yet again today. And it brings along with it the new stuff. So we stopped them in two thousand and fifteen and said, you're not going to build another road from here to infinity. Let's see what your cash flow looks like if you do the build-rebuild cycle of the whole thing. And this is what it looks like. So do y'all see a problem? That first wave was never tested. No civilization on the planet tested out suburbia the way that we did. And none of us ran the numbers about whether or not we could afford it in the future. We just completely changed our civilization after World War II and just went one hundred, one hundred percent into the cars, which is great. But how does it pencil out? And so we told ourselves, we're car people now all of a sudden, even though we've had hundreds, or actually thousands of years of living without them. And we doubled down on it with the second-generation build of that. Well, guess what? Now it's capitalizing on itself and getting in bigger and bigger. And again, remember, we didn't add another road to the system. This is what's happening. Every American city's going through this compounding effect of a legacy effect of what our great-grandparents and our grandparents did. And it's, it's not their fault. They just, we didn't, no one penciled it out back then. We just thought we were prosperous, we're going to learn from this. Sir? Did you have a question or? Okay. So just, this is the kind of hard decisions they're making. This is just, we just took their money and flushed it into the roads to see where it stopped. And we prioritized the big roads first. And just to give them a graphic that you can only afford, that this is their cash flow situation right now. They can only afford half their roads. They're trying to come up with other ways of dealing with this in other systems. They're actually considering a transportation utility fee to treat the roads like their own utility system. And if you want to choose to live way the heck out here and you have all this system, you're going to be paying more of a share of it. If you're on a cul-de-sac, ten percent of the system is cul-de-sac. They spend two point five million dollars a year is what they should be spending to maintain all of those cul-de-sacs. And I said, those are publicly funded driveways. You know, they're not transportation network. People move into a cul-de-sac to not be near transportation, not to have cars go by, right? So why should the public pick up that, that driveway when three people enjoy that? It's not fair. Two point five million dollars a year. Again, this is a pattern we've all been through. Does he live on a cul-de-sac? Sorry. Everybody should, you should thank everybody in the room then. It's a gift for you. Yeah. So as your staff was doing the vacancy analysis, we were doing a similar one, particularly on the north side up in this neighborhood. Where this is blue, blue square is. So just as a sample, this is a particularly hard-hit part of your community. And you can see that those are all the vacant lots. And there's a spillover effect. The folks that live in that neighborhood suffer economic decline with it. They either get left behind or their economic decision is, is made for them. They don't have enough money or whatever, and this is their option to move into it. But these are all the tax delinquency properties that fall within that. So think of this as cause and effect. If it damages the neighborhood, there's going to be a ripple effect to those that are left behind. So these are all the vacant lots in here. And this is the, the stuff that has houses on it. But even when it has a house on it in, in a, in a neighborhood that's been hammered pretty hard, notice that the lot price, or lot, the lot price is actually forty times as much by having a house on it. So you can cultivate value even in a hard-hit neighborhood. So we went through the thought process of pulling the data from the redline information. So what's nice about, not nice, I guess, an opportunity in the data is that they actually talk about the value of those neighborhoods. So we can actually find what they considered a blighted house back then and figure out, well, if, if, if you didn't, if it, if, if folks were allowed to stay in that house and continue to pay taxes over the eighty years, what would even that house pay in taxes, right? So we filled in all of those lots with buildings, and we did a net present value of those houses going. Just to get a rough number on the back of the envelope, there's about seven hundred houses, vacant lots in this picture right here. The valuation, what they'd be paying over eighty-two years is thirty million dollars in taxes. Again, remember, this isn't a decision that your grandparents made overtly. This was done collaterally with these other documents that are out there saying, don't invest in those neighborhoods. So even if your community wanted to buy a mortgage, the banking industry wouldn't let you do that. But this is the effect of what happened. Basically, you know, your predecessors burned thirty million dollars in the street. It's tax, taxes that vaporized over that eighty years. So another way of looking at it is, if you filled in all the houses, what would it yield? And even at, at that current market valuation, it would be about twelve point four million dollars. So replacing a single lot in there would equal forty-two vacant lots, very similar to the study that, that y'all did. Or another thing to do is if you put seventeen houses in there, it would equal the value of the seven hundred lots. So is it hard to do? Can you handle getting seventeen houses built in that area or nearby to start to cultivate your wealth? So think small, think manageable. Find ways to do that incremental infill, thicken up a little bit. We did pull the employment data because it matters on the KC Mo side because they charge an earnings tax. And then this is your population and their distribution based on density. So this area, which is pretty close to the, um, Country Club Plaza area is the most dense part of your region. It's also got the most jobs. So it's, it's got both jobs and residents. So it's actually killing it from, from, these are all your most potent areas from a density standpoint. So a lot of these people can actually walk to work, you know? Sales taxes, a lot of your sales tax was giving us a distribution at this level. And we've, we've talked with your finance officer about drilling into this. But this is the way that we mapped it. We're like, okay, we can't really map what's going on when it's doing that. But we can pull some of it. So this is a relative model of your tax, sales tax potency. And you can see there's a couple of, of big winners here in the downtown. And then Speedway's doing all right. This is a side view of that and sales taxes per acre. And then this is just a couple pulls. The West Village is pulling about one point eight million. Let's call it two million in sales taxes per acre. Seventy-eighth and State's doing about four. And downtown's doing about two. So this is the, a three-dimensional model of it. And again, there's, the caveat is, we're still missing data with this stuff. So this would, this would change. But when we throw it into the regional model, you can see how potent it is over in the Missouri side in their garnering of sales taxes. And then here's their property taxes, and here's the two of them stacked. So this is the, the stack of the property plus the sales tax here and in downtown. And then this is over in Country Club Plaza, is this one up here, which beats their downtown. So just to kind of, uh, since we're talking about KC Mo, this is over by the Sprint Center. There's the highway interchange. So we just did a quick little land use analysis. Here's their green space. Here's their streets and roads. Here's their buildings. And this is all surface parking. Would you have thought there wasn't that much parking over there? Now, what's crazy is, these are all parking structures. So when we start talking about parking, there is a financial effect. When somebody says, "There's not enough parking, I need to buy your parking space," whatever, there is a cost to you all that happens in that. So let me explain it. This is, this is the entire city done this level. So taking the city, this is, again, north is facing up. And then turning the city into a square. So this is the land area of the city, and these are the different uses, right? And then these are the different values. So basically, here's those uses lined up versus everything else. And then, and then this is the valuation. So you see that the buildings are less area than the road. But again, the roads are a big negative number. The buildings are less area than the parking, but look at the value of the buildings versus the value of the parking. Right? And it's real simple. If I'm a, if I'm a builder, and these are, they're numbers in Kansas City, Missouri. The average Kansas City resident, there she is, she's got about a thousand square feet of building dedicated to her, and she's got two parking spaces. But she's also got an extra free one that's non-taxable. So she's got three parking spaces dedicated to her. Now, when this gets built, the assessor's gonna go out there with a price tag gun and put a value on it. So this is the value of the average square foot of building in, um, in, in Kansas City, Missouri. This is the cost of their roads per square foot. When you say cost, cost also has, uh, you should have a reserve account. So if I fix a building and put an air conditioner on the roof, I know that that air conditioner's got a useful life of twenty years. So I have to charge y'all rent, a little piece, for twenty years, so that I can build up sixty thousand dollars to replace that air conditioner. Roads are no different. When you get the roads, you should start thinking of a reserve account that start, you have to build to fix that stuff. Because when you have to replace a road, if you go out and get a bond, that's like getting a credit card to pay off your mortgage. You know, it's, it's, you're a curried debt, but it's also your, your, it's a visible indicator that you don't have enough money to pay for your infrastructure, right? You have to take out a loan. But anyway, when you look at this, it's twenty-two dollars a square foot in front of the building, and it's also twenty-two dollars a square foot in front of the parking. But if you follow the math on this, again, remember, these two things are paying the same millage rate, right? You're paying two percent of taxes on forty-four bucks and two percent of taxes on three dollars. So your revenue is fifteen times greater in the building here versus here, yet your cost is the same. So that's called a subsidy, right? If you charge me less for something, it's gonna be, that's, that's a transference, it's a subsidy. Y'all follow me? The cost is uniform. So when you look at the, you know, when you, when you look at the whole system this way, and you see all of your roads, there is a spatial cost to all of that. I like to joke that it's spatial analysis. This joke only works for certain people that are over the age of thirty-five, but, um, anyway. We did look at the tiffs on both sides. Your tiffs are a little bit, um, there are good tiffs and bad tiffs. We, we saw a couple of bad ones on the other side of the river, where it was just, I can go into those later if you want, but your tiffs are, are more controlled in your city by comparison. They have like three hundred different tiff districts across the river. But here's where yours are, and these are the rough numbers on what they're pulling from a value per acre standpoint. You know, some of them don't have a whole lot of development in them, in them yet, so it's not fair to just judge this as good or bad. It's just, it is what it is at this point. Mission Cliffs is doing better at about fifty thousand. And then when you get into the Speedway, the Speedway is pulling a potent two hundred thousand dollars of, of value per acre. It's still not in the millions, but it is what it is. So just to close, if you're not measuring this stuff, you can't manage it, deal with the stuff you can get your data on first, rather than the subjective, subjective stuff that's a little bit harder to quantify. Once you start getting your, your, your books in order about the, the stuff that's measurable, you'll start to see a different reality. So when you don't have the money for the Greenway, the art teacher, the dancing traffic cop, it's not that you don't have that money, it's that it's buried into a system that's draining you of your wealth. You're paying for it whether you like it or not. The system is not a free market. It's a market that's manipulated by policy decisions and where your money's going. So this all is hiding in plain sight, this is all in your books. Just to close, y'all are worth one point three billion dollars. So as a, as a board, you're the board of directors for a one point three billion dollar corporation. If you're out in the stock market or something like that, think of it that way, which is about two chiefs. You can, y'all, y'all can liquidate yourself and buy a couple chiefs if you want to. And I can tell you that Mr. Hunt knows Patrick Mahone's towel bill. I can tell you the cups in my nightclub cost five cents a pop. You need to be conversant about what a mile of pipe costs, what a mile of road costs, and where you're getting your money for all this stuff. It's a cash flow. So we call this geoaccounting, just putting your, your numbers on a map. Your accountant doesn't care if you buy a boat, right? Your accountant cares if you can afford a boat. So can you afford the things that you own, and how do you, how do you handle this stuff? So putting it on a map helps that, and I'd also recommend this book. Chuck was here speaking yesterday, or maybe the day before. So, uh, yeah, do your math. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe. We have plenty of time for questions or comments.
Thank you. I've been, oh, so I've been thinking about it all day. And actually, since I got my special session a couple weeks ago with Kathleen on our priority-based budgeting. So I, I hope you'll indulge me, 'cause I have three or four things. The first one is, and Rob Richardson's here with planning. So we've completed a master plan for our northeast area community, which you spent quite a bit of time on here. We're currently master planning in the Central Avenue area. And one of the things I'm thinking about is, in those master planning processes, we're working hard to engage our community. And what we're asking them for is, community, what do you want your community to look like and be like? And so we're asking them to help us prioritize. And I'm, you know, beginning to think now, we, we'd probably better take our community that we're master planning with through our exercise with us. So not only do we need to be conversant in, um, how things are taxed and the formulas that are used, and understand the accounting, but we need to bring the community along with. Because we're going down this path, we hope, and we're master planning and asking the community to engage with us. And they may have an entirely different set of hopes and dreams.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And then we're gonna be like, nope, sorry.
Yeah.
Can't do that, it doesn't fit in our priority-based budgeting. It doesn't fit in our vision of where we think priority investments should be made. And so I'm thinking a lot about how do these things merge together? That's kinda one of the things that's, that's fluttering through my head. You know, bringing the community along with, I guess, or at least hearing them in terms of what are their priorities. The second thing on my mind is, if we can use and understand this, this model, and we can see the value in value per acre in turning a vacant lot into a lot that's got a new home on it. It seems like we could take that same philosophy, and it would be equally powerful in making an investment either publicly, privately, or jointly in rehabbing and saving some of the, what we're calling tipping, tipping point houses and blocks. Because we would also be increasing the value per acre of those areas. And we would also be addressing a key component of our, this community's adopted community health improvement plan, which includes as one of its focus areas, safe and affordable housing as a social determinant of health outcomes in this community. So I'm just throwing this stuff on the table, more for kinda comment and, and thought. And then the last thing that I'm hearing that I just think is interesting is, we're talking about the cul-de-sac, for example, as a subsidy. But in this community, we've spent several decades working hand-in-hand with our law enforcement to organize neighborhoods and learn SEPTED principles, crime prevention through environmental design. And in that environment, the cul-de-sac is a crime prevention strategy. It's a traffic calming strategy, and it's one that we've embraced almost. I grew up in a neighborhood that has more than ninety homes in it, but one way in and out. And we saw that as a good thing, because it keeps outsider traffic outside and keeps the neighborhood safe. And so that's an interesting way to look at a cul-de-sac. And I, I guess I understand you're looking at it from a dollars and cents perspective.
Well, it's, it's dollars and cents, and you're picking up the infrastructure cost.
Correct.
And when you, when you disconnect large sections of your community, um, and you force them into one road, what ends up happening is you may have a, a, a reflection of what's going on in your neighborhood, but what ends up happening is everybody is funneled into one collector road that becomes a super expensive road. And then that becomes dangerous because it becomes, you know, people get hit trying to cross it. And we see this in cities where, where they become car sewers. And that-
Tom, what?
Car sewers, like sewer flow of cars, massive amounts of cars going really fast. And then usually what follows from a land use perspective is no one wants to live next to those. So then you get your strip malls and pawn shops and all that other stuff. The, the garbage architecture tends to follow it, not a main street. And, and again, there, all of these things have trickle, trickle effects. And though the, the cul-de-sacs that your police department may have studied, you know, there's a lot of other data points that I would probably ask you about. What's the value of the houses that are there, where are they placed? It's not just because it's a cul-de-sac, it is therefore crime-free, because I could take you to cul-de-sac communities that aren't. You know, so it's, there-
We've used that in a different way than you're describing it.
Yeah.
Really, and now I feel like we're at a crossroads.
Yeah, well, it's just, again, it's, from a clinically data perspective, there are four to five people on that cul-de-sac. That's immeasurable. From a clinical data perspective, you know the cost per square foot is somewhere around twenty-two dollars a square foot. And just pencil that out. You know, actually, where is Judd, is Judd here? Judge trick-or-treating. Judd, Judd told me this morning, Judd, Judd lives on the end of a cul-de-sac, basically on the end of a long dead-end road. He has eight hundred feet of frontage. And he joked with me today, because Judd's a nerd, and he's a data guy. And he goes, "Wow, I guess I owe the city like forty-four thousand dollars." Like, that's what he owes in taxes based on his eight hundred feet of frontage on his dead-end road. And he just started laughing. And I said, "Looks like you figured out the subsidy." He's like, "It's super awesome." So it's like, you know, it's, that's the reality of the situat-, he's wrestling with this cognitively.
Yeah.
Because-
I think I am too.
Yeah. You know, and it's just, again, these are all value statements. When you, you all have to go through this with budgets, and, and from a planning perspective, and I'm, I'm a planner, I've been through plenty of sessions where I sit there with citizens, and I'm like, "Hey, what do you all want?" Which is really not fair to the citizens, because do they know what point of reference they're coming from? You know, do you ask your kids, like, "Hey, just, what do you wanna buy?" Or do you say to your kids, "We've got twenty-five dollars, what do you wanna buy with that?"
I just think what you're bringing us is something that's gonna cause us to think, you know, add a layer of thinking to planning processes.
Yeah.
So, uh, Joe, could you just explain or tell us about any cities or counties that have done what Commissioner Bynum is, you know, implying? And that is, taken this information, these insights, and then it applied it to the development process or policies. You know, you mentioned the transport, transportation utility fee. So right now, we're going through a process of trying to restructure our stormwater fee. And the pushback that we're getting from people is, you know, as you said, the, the saying from colonial America is, "Don't tax me, don't tax thee, tax the man behind the tree." No one wants to pay the taxes. So as we look at the stormwater cost, um, there are those who are saying, "Well, we, I don't, I'm not using the stormwater, uh, system. Why am I being taxed for this?" Or, "I live in a part of town that we pay all the taxes, we should not be paying for this." And so, but if you look at the, the patterns, you could clearly see the suburban development.
Yeah.
It's a tremendous amount of infrastructure cost that hasn't caught up yet.
Again, the, the citizen's gonna be tragically limited in their knowledge of the world until they're informed. So I think a lot of this, and you're dead on, where we have to, I think it's all of us have to have a civic conversation about this stuff. And this is sort of my role here, is just a different form of education. I'm just giving you a different math, but looking at civics that you all have, you're obligated to serve, right? And you also see that there's budget, tough budget questions that you have to wrestle out at the end of every year when you get into budget season, and what you can prioritize. You know there's not enough money to pay for everything. So y'all already know this stuff, and you have to convey this stuff to your citizens. And in their defense, most people can't even do their tax bill. They have no idea how their taxes are formed, they don't understand what a millage rate is. You know, a lot of this stuff is just obfuscated to a level that's not fair to the citizen. That's why we do this presentation with the dummies, I make jokes, you know, this is, how do I mainstream this so that normal people can understand this stuff? You know, so I'm not gonna talk in, in data points that are really difficult to understand. It's not to debase citizens, it's like, y'all have jobs, you got like day jobs, you're doing other things, you're busy. And I don't need to come in here and nerd out about millage rates and some complex math and stuff like that, I'm gonna make pictures. So, you know, the citizens, give them information that's easily digestible, not to patronize them, but to like, help them out, because they're busy people. And they've got other, other priorities in their life. But if, if, if the habit has been for them to come here and just ask for anything, and even worse, when we hold meetings and say, "Sky's the limit, what do you want?" You can't start from that, that way. And one is, it'll blow their minds, but two is, that it's gonna set expectations that you could never fulfill. And in the cul-de-sac situation, there is a cost per square foot. And just make sure you put it out there for people and say, "Is this the, is this the priority for our community?" You know, this is the cost, and these are the other effects that are gonna happen. Is this, is this the best use of our money? So in the case of, um, stormwater, let me show you this one. This is, this is a, a study we did in Eugene, Oregon. And so we did the revenue model, and they wanted to take the next step deeper. And they're like, "Okay, if you can do the revenue, can you do the cost?" So this is their city floating in the lake, looking at the side of it. And you can see, here's all their revenues, and, and here are their costs down here. And this is just the, the hard stuff, pipes, bridges, roads, physical stuff that you own at that point. And we're not talking about staff, and we're not gonna geoaccount where the, where the city attorney needs to be or whatever. But just, this is the physical stuff. When you nut your costs against your revenues, this is what's in the black, and this is what's in the red. And they immediately saw how upside-down their city was. So this is the top view of the model, and this is the bottom view. And what it is, is a death by a thousand cuts, right? A lot of little micro subsidies that are out there. And just as you saw, you're taxing your residential forty percent while you're taxing commercial. Well, how much land use of that do you have? The majority of your land use of your city is essentially paying half what your commercial properties are. That's a subsidy, right? So when you look at your building type, and this is just a, this is a really compacted version of their presentation. We call this the Brady Bunch slide, but this is like residential, low density, medium density, high density, mixed use, low, medium, high, commercial, low, medium, high. And this is how it nets out. So the average house is upside down about fourteen hundred dollars an acre in their community. But, per, per year. So when you do that, you know, you're essentially operating in a deficit in that land use, which you can cover if you have a lot of this stuff to compensate. Now, their city is actually pretty well laid out, it's pretty compact, they have a growth boundary. So they've choked themselves down a certain area. They have six percent of their growth boundary has vacant land on it, six percent. So they basically built in a container, like a, like a Petri dish, they didn't expand out. But even that, they've got eighty percent of their land use in that single-family category at that deficit. And we said to them, we're like, you know, I, it would, I would be a fool to say, "You can't have a single-family house." I'm not saying that. Just saying, just put that in check and make sure you write that down, so that everybody is conscious of it. Because everybody wants to have a house, right? So maybe if we just thought about, okay, we've got this one category or these two categories, we've got that set. We've got plenty of that in our market already. Maybe we need to start doing these other ones to compensate. You gotta balance your diet. I can't eat barbecue, although I'm, I'm doing a really good job eating barbecue every single day here. But I can't do that my entire life, right? I'll kill myself. You heard about my heart disease. You're right, you guys are already killing me already, I've been to, I've been to Slaps, I've been to all these places, you know, it's like, we do this with our diets, right? So do this with your balance of your diet and your, and your budget. So, um, you know, we said to them, we're like, "This, this looks like it's doing alright over here." So what if you just, this is their version of Country Club Plaza. We're like, "Why don't, why don't you do a couple more of these out here? And, and maybe do a couple pieces in downtown." Downtown can't subsidize everything, but it can carry some weight. And you have to reinvest in downtown, too. When you talk to anybody that's got downtown property, you hear from them on the sidewalks and all the stuff they need, that's expensive. But they're also producing wealth. We, we find, um, we've, one of the other ways of looking at subsidy is, uh, and this is again, back to the Eugene model, little things like this, dialing in your infrastructure properly. So this is, this is their sewage system. So this is where all their sewers go. All of these are different sewage basins, so each of these colors is its own little sewage subarea, right? This neighborhood up here has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different lift stations. Lift stations are super expensive, right? Yeah. So I asked, I asked the, the sewer folks, they're like, "Oh, we're an enterprise account, we're good, we're all good." And I said, "Hold on a second. Do these people pay more per flush, per gallon than these people?" And they said, "No." And I'm like, "Well, uh, these people have more cost, right? It seems like a per gallon, they should be paying a little bit more than these folks over here." Y'all follow me? And again, it's just, that's a subsidy. Now, I'm not saying go out and do that, but at least talk to the folks in the neighborhood so they're aware that a lift station is super expensive, that you've gotta pay for this stuff. Get people civically literate about this stuff. When you look at these two neighborhoods here and here, and this is downtown, and again, sometimes you're gonna have biases inside your own staff. Where they're like, this is, in this case, the engineering department's like, "We're good, we got everything under, under accounting. We've got our own budget system, we don't have to go through property taxes, we're cool." And so we showed them these two neighborhoods, and we said, "Look, um, this neighborhood," and they're like, "Well, it's more dense." And I'm like, "Yeah, the, the width of the pipe is only one inch wider here." It's not that expensive to dig a ditch one inch wider. It's much more expensive to dig that ditch one foot longer. And the engineer was like, "Yeah, you're right." I'm like, "Okay, so this neighborhood on the right has double the amount of people in the district, and it's got half the amount of pipes." So what that nets out to, these people have four times the amount of feet per person in, in pipe. Four times the cost, right? Yet they're paying the same rate, why is that fair? And then you look at the valuation, this is, you're getting more value out of this neighborhood. And the engineer was like, "Well, I don't care about property taxes, because we have an enterprise account." And I said, "Yeah, go ahead and tell that to the finance officer, or the police department, or the planning department. Ask them if they care about property taxes, because that's how they're paid." So you don't care about other departments in the city? And the guy took it back, he's like, "Yeah, now I get it, I see your point." And we said, "But secondly, check this out. It costs more to replace that system versus this system." So just, you know, these are professionals that didn't get that. And I'm like, "Look, you might wanna just dial the accounting differently in there." And, and again, we just don't, we don't think that way. We've, we've got these habits of the way that we've always thought about this stuff. I know that this is different thinking. So I play idiot, I'm not, I'm not a finance officer, I don't know what I'm doing, I'm an architect, I just ask questions.
Yes, sir. Um, I need to talk through this with you, so I might be, you know, just talking around or rambling, but twenty-two, twenty-three years ago, we combined the city and the county-
or rambling, but 22, 23 years ago, we combined the city and the county to become the unified government. We began to work on our, what's now called the Legends. The idea at that particular time is that if we would invest out there, then at some point, we would be able to leverage that investment to be able to do things on the eastern side of town, the likes of which we are, I think we're in that point right now where we're trying to do that. Which brings us to this conversation, I think the mayor's leading us in with regard to the development of our eastern part of town. When I look at those slides, it makes me wonder, it makes, I just wonder about that investment now. It's causing me to kind of second guess or to think about that investment out west. It seemed completely logical to me up to this point in time. And now, I'm wondering, you know, how, if we were to be able to do it again, was that the right move? I still think that it was. I still want to see the western part of town develop because I live in the eastern part of town, and I want to leverage those things. But when you talk about just the cost of infrastructure and how far we've expanded and the real value of that, it just, it's causing me some turmoil, some tension on the inside. And I'm wondering, how do we then, that's the first item of tension. The other item of tension that ties into what Commissioner Bynum talked about with the Northeast Master Plan, and what we felt like at that particular time was that we were not leveraging this real asset, community asset called Fairfax Industrial Area, that is part of the northeast area. Because for a long time, we did not, we did not equate the two of them together. And then, when I looked at those graphs again in terms of the matrix, the industrial area is not really, would you use the term, you know, in terms of its potency?
Potency, yeah.
It's not a potent area, but the logic that I had at least, and I don't know about my colleagues, was that it is in fact a potent area, and we need to leverage that potent area in order to build up northeast. So, kind of help me through these areas of tension if you don't mind.
Yeah, from the, the question of industrial came up this morning, and, you know, it's going to depend. It depends on the project, it depends on the deal that if it was a TIF or any kind of subsidy that happened, typically a lot of those manufacturing jobs get that. And just the typology of building that they're in, particularly if they're manufacturing, they're not valuable buildings, and they're also really big. Now, so long as that's the type of job that's in it, great. That's what it is. And it's just something you accept, that what we're doing is a trade-off. We're getting the jobs that bring people. And when I bring people, they get into a house. But that house is going to be discounted a little bit, but that house is also going to bring a shopper, right? That shopper's going to spend 30% of their discretionary income in retail purchases. Okay, there's a trade-off effect, there's a trickling effect. But if you're doing that for like, in the case of like a retail square footage, pound for pound, dollar for dollar, the small shops tend to do more higher producer than the big shops. And you saw that with our building compared to the Walmart. So, it's going to depend on the typology, but that's like, that's something where it's good to have those jobs if they stay here, you know? But if it's, if they're just here for a teaser or some tax break, and then that vaporizes and they leave.
Yeah, and therein lies our challenge because we talk about those high-paying jobs in that area, and yet, we have one of the lowest household median incomes in the state of Kansas. But we have, in terms of wage, wages, we have the second or third highest wages being paid out of Wyandotte County. So, we're constantly struggling with that in terms of something that we need to work on, I guess, on other areas, but it just, it's kind of, it's just layers of issues that we're working through that makes it kind of cloudy to me in terms of trying to get a good, firm direction.
Yeah, there's, again, I'd recommend Chuck's book. It's a pretty quick read. One of my favorite analogies that he uses is we tend to think of the city as a complex system, and it is. But it's not complex, it's complicated. You know, like, growing a crop of corn is complex. It's difficult to know how corn grows, what it needs and all that stuff. But a rainforest is complicated. There's lots of moving parts, there's lots of things that you can't tell if you're affecting something. Corn, you can tell, you know? So, don't go into the city thinking that this is going to be a complex problem. It's complicated. There's a lot of moving parts, but so long as you're curious and dig in and ask questions and just test things out and minimize your risk on your test, do the small moves and see how they're going. I'm not going to say that the, you know, whole cloth, the western part of your county is cast off, anything but that. It's just, you're with it now. So, just make sure that that area can grow up its areas, too. But I can tell you that when you stack stories, you're stacking your dollar bills. You're doing it on less square footage of infrastructure. There are some finite measurables that you can use to balance your budget. The way to start is, can you afford all of the things that you want? Just start there. And if the answer is no, then it's like, all right, we've got to start asking questions. So, you know, you started with the, 20 years ago, the idea was all of these annexations would pay for the east side. Let me ask you this simple question. Do you have enough money to solve that problem now? No. So, it obviously didn't meet its goals, which is all right. You can't turn the clock back, but you can learn from it. You know, it's just, it's an evolving set of problems.
And Commissioner, just to clarify, I think that, you know, what we have seen is the increase in property values around the Legends has generated a tremendous amount of revenues for the city as well as the sales tax, which is being redirected to our blight remediation and also to obviously paying for infrastructure and for, you know, public safety. So, we, there was an intentional move as well as a reduction in property taxes. We took some of the burden off the property owners within Wyandotte County and placed it on the visitors who were coming into the Legends. So, we are seeing some redirection of that. Commissioner Burrows?
Mayor, thank you. Mayor Alvy, Administrator Bach, I want to thank Joe. Information is key here. The data is quite telling, and it will be a challenge for us to work through that data and utilize it to the best of our ability. This morning, I asked you a specific question about exempt property and how it affects a community's bottom line, and if you continue to give away property to exempt entities, what impact that has moving forward? And, but after listening to your presentation today, I picked up on something else that when we reinvest in a community with infrastructure, and I'll talk about our new schools in an aging community, we've reinvested in our education facilities in our community, which was much needed. However, the neighborhoods around those schools have a lot of the vacant lots, a lot of underdevelopment, and so, there's a, we're talking about a different return here. One, we're giving property away to exempt entities, and two, we're not developing the property that's available around those entities. So, help us, help me understand the benefit of one and maybe the opportunity with another.
Okay. This is, we did a project in Gainesville, Florida. Gainesville's home to the University of Florida, a big, large, non-taxable entity. This is Alachua County, zooming into Gainesville. Here's Gainesville. Downtown's over here. This is, this is the university, and you can see it's a big, non-taxable thing. That's the only fraternity that was kicked off campus. We told them they need to kick more fraternities off campus because they're taxpaying now. But anyway, Sarah Videl, trying to blink, I don't know. Sarah Videl was the economic development director, and she's doing all of these TIF districts between downtown and the university. And she wanted measurables to say, "Should we keep these TIF districts? Are they worth keeping? Is it good activity? What's happening?" She had no idea. She knew that things were happening, and you can clearly see she's created value in this area, but she wanted measurables. So, let's kind of zoom in for a second and look at what her territory is. So, this is getting into the city from the county. And the county, by the way, was on her back about these TIF districts. And they're like, "Okay, clock's done, give us our taxes back, you know, your TIF districts expired." That was the political tension that was happening. So, zooming into just the TIF districts, so here's downtown right here, here's the university, and this is Sarah's world, just these four TIF districts right here. So, we went into each of these districts and broke them down based on productivity. And you can see, some districts aren't doing so well compared to others. So, she wanted to know what the measurables were. So, these are the four different TIF districts. And so, we came up with like, how do you make things simple for folks so that they can understand, or not have a simple metrics level? So, we made a monopoly card of the district. So, this district here, we're like, "Okay, so, here's the taxable value, here's the size, here's the percent non-taxable, here's the peak VPA. So, this is the top of your model, here's your average, and this is your growth from the recession to today. You actually grew by 19% in value. That's really good. And your peak value is really good, and your average value is really good." This neighborhood right here, Pleasant Street, this is a traditional African-American neighborhood. Her office is in here, and she's working with that neighborhood as well. They actually cleaned their clock. This one's growing even more valuable, but they're coming from a much lower point of average value and a much lower peak. So, she knows she still has to work with that neighborhood. One of the things that she's doing there is code hacks, where if somebody goes in and fixes the house or does a house or whatever, she's learning what all the hurdles are that are in the way and turning around and breaking those down so that folks inside the neighborhood can do those improvements rather than having to figure out what the code processes and all of that stuff. She's like, "Why should somebody that just has access to capital and their daddy's on land use attorney, why should they be allowed to come in and do investment and not the folks inside the neighborhood?" She's awesome. But, you know, this one, she's still got to do more work because the average value's a little low. Downtown, killing it, 40% growth, but a much lower average, a much lower peak or average value than over here. So, maybe let this one go. This one's done, you've done your job, you still have a little bit more work to do here. This one, you need a lot more, but over here, this is not good. That neighborhood's losing at 3% in value. That's going down. Now, okay, that's bad. The city's worse. How is your whole city sinking in value? And the county's even worse off than that. So, this is the reason why the county's asking for that tax base. I get it. You know, but then one of the things that we said is like, maybe you all should hire Sarah to do a little bit of consulting out in the county because she's obviously figuring some stuff out. You've got a little fighter pilot right here. She's amazing. Utilize her countywide every once in a while because she's obviously figuring some things out. But again, having measurables to see that. But one of the things that's kind of awesome about the models, you can see, it's like having an ocean. The ocean doesn't lose value, the ocean is an opportunity for value at the beachfront. And she figured that out. She basically built a bunch, got a whole bunch of student housing built. So, rather than have the students on campus, I'm going to put them on taxable real estate and get their money. So, students are kind of awesome. They're like, they don't have bottoms in their pockets. Anybody that has a college student in their life knows, they just drop money all over the street. They're really good at spending money. So, she's taking advantage of that. There's all sorts of bars and whatever, and for her, that's tax base. Does that get close to the...
The second part of my question was the vacated properties around there. So, she figured out how to put investment around an exempt piece of property. But what do we do about neighborhoods that need infill housing to make enough of an impact? Building one or two homes a year in a neighborhood can be of benefit, but how do you make the real big bang in a period of time that supports the school districts, investment, as well as the infrastructure investment we as a community put in?
Well, that's what she's doing with these two neighborhoods. That's the code hack. You know, that's the, that's, we have a term of art inside economics called economic gardening. You know, gardening is not just done all at once. You have to constantly tend the crop. You have to go in there and weed, you've got to do stuff. So, she's been doing that in these neighborhoods. It's a, it's not as big as a bang out the door, but it rises the tide of the whole district. Over here, it's easier by the side of the university to drop an eight-story building with, you know, students shoved into 200-square-foot pods, right? They don't, the students don't care, you can jam them in there. In the neighborhood, it's a different form of economic development, you know? So, and she's, right now, she was leveraging ones against the other. She had access to all the portfolios, but she's very responsible in the fact that she realizes she needs to move on to other areas and focus on them. But she's, it's the code hacks, it's the little ones. Could you have free teacher housing? Or you just, that's an incentive for a teacher in the school to walk to school, that that's, maybe that's the giveaway from a housing standpoint, build it and flip it to a teacher, you know? And then they had, just give a rule that they have to live there for 10 years. Buffalo, New York, is losing population, and one of the things that they did with the students at University, SUNY Buffalo, State University at Buffalo, they give the students a house for a dollar. But the rule is they have to live there for 10 years. And the attitude is that if that student lives there after graduation for 10 years, generally, they're going to put roots down, and at that point, they become a citizen. And so, they're just like, whatever, that's our loss, but we're not going to lose the house as a tax producer because that person will pay the taxes even though they got the house for a dollar.
Yes, Commissioner.
So, I was fortunate, I got to visit Gainesville in, over the Labor Day weekend. And we took a drive down through there, and my friend was showing me around there to show me what had happened up in the Pleasant area and how that's changed and the way they were letting the community transform their homes. And it's pretty amazing to see because as you go from block to block, you can see one person started and then the next one, and it was a very, very exciting domino effect because those are a lot of older homes, the older, you know, 1800s-type homes. And it's, it was really exciting to see those changes that are happening. It was also totally shocking, really, to be right next to all of that gray area, which is the university, and then see all of the activity that is going on with the high rises and all of that, all the stuff with everybody getting to go out and play and eat and all the fun stuff that makes the money, that pays a lot of taxes. That was very exciting, too. And the downtown was kind of interesting because they're still kind of, even though it shows a 43% growth, they're still struggling. I'm looking at their area, they're struggling, but you can tell they're making, making some gains, but maybe, maybe not as dramatic as what is going on. Because, of course, they started at a lower level, as you said. So, this is always, this is very exciting, and to see it really brings us home. And I appreciate you bringing this all forward. I really enjoyed your presentation back, way back. How long ago was that when you were down on the plaza? A year or two ago? And that was very exciting. So, every time I hear it, the more of it sinks in. And the bottom line is, is when Commissioner Bynum was here, but sorry, she's gone, but when she brought up the cul-de-sac issue, it's basically as a community, we kind of made a decision to pour more money into an area to support what we thought, I think, was safety and comfort and that sort of thing. And maybe just didn't realize, in my real life, I wasn't there then, but realize what the aftereffect would be is how much money it was going to cost us to maintain that kind of a neighborhood. So, that's it.
Back to Asheville for a second. One of the things that's probably not fair when I do the presentation, you know, in Asheville, we like to joke that our downtown was an instant success, it only took 20 years. You know, these were all moves that were done in the 80s and slow moves over time. Now, we're one of the top 10 tourist places on the planet. And we get 10 million tourists a year that come through my city. I have 150 restaurants, 40 breweries, it's ridiculous. But going back in time, it wasn't like that. Even when I moved to town in 2003, it wasn't like that. I mean, it was getting hot, but not anything that what we are today. And I can tell you, Gainesville, I visited that when I was in college, and their downtown was bombed out. So, yeah, it does take time to do this stuff, and Sarah's doing a bang-up job up there, turning it around. But your observations about downtown are spot-on. Just the little pieces of it are good, but it kind of falls apart pretty quickly.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Menocosi.
Good evening, Mr. Menocosi, I've not had the, uh, benefit of hearing this presentation before, so this is great, case of first impression. Couple of things, um, I wanted your opinion on. We are currently contemplating and actually in the process of a zoning rewrite code. From your presentation, I got a couple of things that I'm going to walk away with. One, we'd heard before, over and over, that housing on a vacant lot is certainly going to yield more than not, or on a vacant home. One of the things that, uh, this code will address and anticipate are tiny houses. We are in the process of trying to decide, is there going to be a minimum, uh, square footage for a tiny lot? I've heard one amount, one square footage amount given. And what is that going to look like, on what kind of size of lot? Do you have any words of caution, or, um, joy, for another word, another word, concerning when you look at these houses, if that kind of square footage, and I think I've heard four hundred was, uh, square footage on these tiny lots? I'm concerned in that areas of the city that have a lot of lots, you're going to get these little tiny houses, and what's that going to do to other residential structure, excuse me, residential structures in the area in terms of their valuation? So could you speak to that, if you can give me any information on that? Also, it sounded like at first, and I get it later, that Walmart was in trouble, but I think what I'm taking away from this is that the more impervious surface and the bigger area, there's a cost to that. And I also, I had to make, I have to, uh, uh, mention for anyone that may be working in Fairfax, that, uh, we love Fairfax, it's the oldest industrial, um, area in the country. But since I have been here, I have always treated them as, as an industrial, uh, a commercial constituent. So they've been very, um, active in wanting to improve their area. I don't think we want to not do that, I don't think that's what Commissioner Johnson was meaning. So just in case members of the Fairfax Industrial Association, who've been great to work with, are listening, don't take that as a knock at all. So, thank you.
Well, you, you need those jobs, and, and, and it provides a unique opportunity in your community, and the asset's there, right? Um, as far as the, the, the tiny house thing, um, it actually, the other night, Chuck joked, you know, our ancestors just called those houses, right? They weren't called tiny or anything, you just, you bought, you, you had what you could afford. From a standpoint of valuation, um, it's, there's not a finite answer to that, because, let me, let me give you an example, like, this is, this is Charleston, South Carolina. So, you know, I told them, I said, look, you didn't make all this value by the ocean, God gave you the ocean, so I'm going to go ahead and wipe away that value, because you can't claim what God gave you. But this is what humans made. And so they're an old city that predates the Declaration of Independence. So I have a birthdate of my country, right there, and they have buildings that predate that, like these guys, right? That is a tiny house. It's a, it's an apartment above a liquor store, and it's built in sixteen eighty-six, it's, it's, it's smaller than a parking space, right? But look at its value per acre, thirteen million dollars of value per acre, you know? So, I mean, th- this is the length of the building. So we could call that a tiny house. I call it very, very potent, right? And when you pull just those buildings that predate the Declaration of Independence, here they are, here they are in plan, there's twenty-one acres of those buildings. This is what they paid in county taxes in two thousand and fifteen. Now, mind you, they paid city taxes and Business Improvement District taxes on, this is just what the county got, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Out in the county, I have another building, it's twenty-one acres, and this is what it paid the same year. You know, it's like, part of this is a little bit of Freakonomics, it's like, a little weird seeing these numbers, but this isn't, this isn't the only example, this, I'll give you another example. Uh, this is, uh, West Palm Beach, Florida. That's a small commercial building on the left, this is a skyscraper. Notice that this is more potent than that one, they're two blocks away from each other. You know, it's like, who would have thought a little building's more potent than a big building? But it is. But here's, we grabbed all the Donalds' property, now, he was, this is before he was president, but the Donalds' pulling about four hundred thousand dollars of value per acre, right? Which is less potent than these shotgun shacks in the poor African-American neighborhood. These are tiny houses, they're more potent than him. And I showed this to the folks in, in West Palm Beach, and one of the commissioners said to me, he goes, well, that's not right, and I went, correct. It's not right, but that's the truth. This is, this is the, this is what's going on inside our economic system. Just because it's a small house doesn't mean that it's not potent, doesn't mean that it's a home for somebody in your community, and doesn't mean that it doesn't add value to your community. So this is what people can afford, but when you have a, a kitchen and a bathroom per square foot, that's going to drive the value up on a piece of property. So having a kitchen and a bathroom in a house, and even if it's a small modest house, it's a starter home for somebody that becomes a resident in your community, and they can, if it's designed in a way that they can add on and, and grow in their community as their family grows, that's, that's good.
So we have to end here, I want to thank you again, uh, this is awesome, you've been very helpful to us, and we're not done with this conversation. We have about a ten-minute transition period, we will convene in regular session at seven oh five. Thank you.